Good evening. We are now calling this meeting to order. If you could please pay attention to Councilwoman Ortiz for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance, please rise if you are able, even if you are at home.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening, Lord, thanking you, thanking you for the knowledge that we have about this coronavirus that is all through our city, all through our nation, all through our land. And Lord, we thank you for our ears. We thank you for hearing. We thank you for acknowledging it. And we thank you for moving on people's hearts that are masking up. We even thank you for those that are not masking up, Lord, so that they will be able to be touched. Lord, we just ask that you continue to put your head of protection around our city, around our elderly, around our hospitals. Or to ask a special blessing on the doctors who are trying to get the word out. Lord, we just continue to ask that you just continue to keep us and hold us as we go through this trying time. Lord, you said you'll never leave us nor forsake us. And Lord, we're leaning on you and depending on you to get us through these tough times. I lift up my colleague Lesser to you. I ask that you touch his body and touch all those that are affected. I ask that you touch our youth. I ask that you touch our kids, our people that are at home. I ask that you just touch them in a mighty way. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. And pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
For which is standing.
And to the Republicans.
Under God.
On your mission.
For liberty and justice for all.
For all.
Deputy Mayor was a little behind, but we still love him.
Sorry about that.
At this point in time, we move on to the roll call. If the clerk could proceed.
Mayor Dayla Isla?
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Here.
Valdivia Alcala?
Here.
Ortiz?
Here.
Emerson?
Here.
Padilla?
Here.
Nager?
Here.
Dobler?
Here.
Duncan?
Here.
And Lesser. We have nine present.
Time being here, we have a quorum. We now proceed to the consent agenda.
A is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, allowing and approving city expenditures for the period of June 27 through July 31, 2020, and enumerating said expenditures therein via minutes of the regular meeting of November 10, 2020. There was a list of cereal malt beverage and open after midnight applications. Staff is recommending approval.
What is the pleasure of the body? We have Councilman Dobler moves for approval. Do we have a second? Councilwoman Nager seconds the motion. Any questions or comments with regards to the consent agenda? Seeing none, we proceed by voting.
Mayor Dayla Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Alcala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
I think we lost them.
Okay. Padilla?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Padilla?
Yeah, 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 yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
And Duncan?
Yeah.
We have nine yes. Motion passes.
Now we move on to the action items. Action item A, if the clerk would read.
A is a resolution introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, temporarily suspending certain governing body rules and procedures in response to the COVID-19 pandemic until February 16, 2021.
City manager?
Well, definitely in the light of where we're at right now with all meeting virtually, we need to continue this. And so we'll do it for another three months and take this up again in February if we need to continue to do so remotely. Does not preclude, should we get better, that we can obviously have people come back. We're going to work hard on trying to set up something for public comment and for comment on agenda items as we go forward. If, for example, the next meeting needs to be virtual. We obviously weren't able to do as much of that preparation for this meeting, and that's part of the reason that we shortened the agenda down to just covering the action items that we needed to. So that's where we're at. We seek approval.
What is the pleasure of the body? Councilwoman Ortiz makes a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Councilwoman Nager. Questions or comments with regards to this motion? Councilman Duncan, I see you.
Okay. I just want to, I mean, and I know staff is working on it, and I'm confident they'll get it done. Just reiterate what the city manager said is, if we do have to do this for all of or part of our meetings in December, I obviously think there are some issues in front of us before the end of the year that I don't think I will be comfortable voting on if we can't add that public comment component somehow. So, and like I said, I know staff is working on it, and that's the intention. I just wanted to let folks out there know that that's important enough, I know, to a lot of us, to make sure that's part of it before we make some certain decisions for the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions? Councilwoman Nager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And just to echo what Councilmember Duncan said, I'm very much looking forward to that because I know that that's one of the reasons why our non-action item got moved was because we wanted to hear from the public as well. And so we received some great feedback already, but I am looking forward to having that sort of comment in the meeting. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Just for people that are watching, if they have not been following our committee meetings, we've had great success with that at the committee level. And so at least we've taken a start at being ready to do that boldly. So just sharing that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. If there's no additional comments or questions on this item, I will, I will take this time, even though I'll add it in my remarks later on, to show that your governing body is taking this pandemic situation so seriously, especially in the wake of knowing that we have one hospital that has already at capacity with COVID and the other one that is pretty much there by making sure that we are doing everything that we can to stay at home, not only to keep our family safe, but most importantly, to keep yours as well. We encourage anybody that has the ability to do this, to follow what this council has boldly done, which is to make sure that we are leading by example. Every single one of the members of this body decided that this was the prudent way to proceed because we are so concerned with regards to our community safety. So thank you, councilmembers, for your just great leadership. I am grateful to work with you guys. That being said, if there is no additional comments, we proceed with the vote.
Mayor Dayla Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Alcala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
And Duncan?
Yes.
We have nine yes. Motion carries.
We move on to item B, if the clerk would read.
He is authorizing a public hearing for December 8, 2020, for the purpose of hearing and answering objections of taxpayers relating to the proposed amendments to the 2020 operating budget.
City manager?
Hey, Mayor. As she said, we will set the public hearing date for December 8 on the amendments to the budget for 2020. We're working on those and completing that action now and getting ready for that, that date. And so we just ask, this is really just a procedural to set the hearing date.
Comments or questions from the body? Seeing none, what is the pleasure of the body?
For approval.
We have a motion for approval, Councilwoman Nager. We have a second by Councilwoman Ortiz. Comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, we proceed with the vote.
Mayor Dayla Isla?
Yes.
Councilmember Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Alcala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
We have nine yes. Motion carries.
We now move on to item D, if the clerk would read.
He is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, amending the district path referred to and made a part of the zoning ordinances by Section 1850, 050 of the Topeka Municipal Code, approving a planned unit development master plan for Evergy Electric Substation located on property south of Southeast Sixth Avenue between Southeast Gordon and Southeast Highland from X1 Mixed Use District to PUD Planned Unit Development, X1 Zoning Use Group, plus the addition of a public utility facility type 2, and being within the city of Topeka, Shawnee County, Kansas.
City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Finder is on our meeting tonight, and he'll run through the PUD request that we had before. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, everybody. As you heard, this is a proposed rezoning at the southeast corner of Sixth and Golden. Evergy is applying to expand their substation at this corner. It has been there since 1981. The expansion would include relocation of a auto repair business on that site. The main reason this is going through rezoning, or I should say a PUD, is they do need a variance for their tower height. Currently, just according to our existing code, it would only be allowed to go up to 62 feet. Their tower height would go up to, or is proposed to go up to 75 feet. So the PUD can accommodate that and make all the findings. We held our public process and did not have any further comments from the neighbors. So with that in mind, staff did recommend approval. They, basically, the look would be still a masonry fence around the site and be actually a little better than they would normally look. So there's just that condition, the variance to the height, tower height, and some landscaping of the sidewalk is also part of this development. So with that, Planning Commission recommended approval unanimously as well. I'll stand for any questions at this time.
Questions for Mr. Finder? Councilman Duncan to be followed by Councilwoman Ortiz.
We not know this, and partly I'm just curious, but why is the current limit 62 feet? I mean, is there, is there a reason? Is there a federal or a state or something else that we're complying with to begin with?
Councilman Duncan, good question. Yeah, it seems very specific, doesn't it? What we gathered is that that was a height agreed a long time ago for personal radio antennas in residential neighborhoods. That seemed to be, for whatever reason, what, what the code allowed for tower, for communication type towers in residential areas. So antennas and things of that nature. So without this being exempt from height restrictions, we had to go to the PUD. There are, there are some poles that are exempt from height restrictions, but a substation is clearly, in the zoning code at least, is not.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve this. Evergy has done a great job at Six and Golden, keeping it up to par, keeping it looking good, grabbing the graffiti off of it. They've done a great job. So I'll make a motion to approve this.
We have a second? Councilwoman Hiller seconds. Comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, we proceed by voting.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry. If there's any ex parte?
Oh, absolutely. If there is any ex parte communication that you've had with regards to this item, it is your opportunity now to ensure that you disclose such ex parte communications. This includes calls, contacts, emails with the other party in this ordinance, and you should be able to disclose if you've had such communication that you are able to make an impartial decision. Seeing, oh, Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have had emails, phone calls, letter from the city staff, and I can make an impartial decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. All right, seeing none other, now we may proceed with the voting.
Mayor Dayla Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Alcala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
We have nine yes. Motion carries.
We now move on to item D, if the clerk would read.
D is a security guard license appeal submitted by Christopher Ortega.
Before we proceed with this item, I do have a few things that I wanted to make sure that I indicated. Mr. Ortega contacted staff to advise that he would be unable to attend the hearing this evening. Staff has no objection to continuing his security license appeal hearing to the December 1 meeting. And we wanted to make sure that if anybody on the council would be amenable to make a motion to move the hearing for Mr. Ortega to December 1. We have Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala making a motion, a second by Councilwoman Ortiz. Any questions that we have with regards to the motion that we've just executed? Yes, Councilwoman Ortiz?
Did you say that I seconded the motion?
Yes.
No, I'm not going to second the motion. I want to do, I want to go ahead and do something else with it.
Oh, counsel for procedural issue, Councilwoman Valdivia, would you still like to second it, or would you like to rescind that motion? Thank you so much. Councilwoman Ortiz, yes, what is your, your comments?
Thank you. I'd like to go ahead and approve the denial, but I am not going to support the denial, and I'll tell you why. I believe in second chances. I've talked to the chief today. He does not have a problem with this. Also, this is over 10 years old. This guy has been working for us for the last nine years. And, you know, we're going through this pandemic. He doesn't get paid that much. There are security measures that are put in place, and I read his letter that said the case had been dismissed according to the chief, and he can chime in if he wants to. You know, he got it taken care of. I don't, I don't know if it was dismissed, but he got it taken care of. I'm a firm believer in second chances. And I'll tell you a quick story. We had a guy that came through for trying to get a job for heating and air conditioning. You're just, you know, he's 10 years smarter now. He's been working for us. He's given us no problems. He's right under our radar. Had a guy that worked for us that we gave a second chance. He made it, and now he's a HVAC guy. Things just happen. And so I'm going to make a motion to go ahead and approve the denial, but I won't support it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Second?
If it is not a second, I am concerned that the information on the cover sheet does not match the letters. And I'm, I'm thinking that we need to get those reconciled so that we can have a good consideration.
So if, if, does that include a second, Councilwoman? Because I want to make sure that we have a second so that we can vote up or down. It does not. Okay. Do we have a second for that first motion?
Can we just clarify what that motion is?
The motion is to deny the appeal by Councilwoman Ortiz, is what she's saying.
And?
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. If, if I could ask a question of Councilwoman Ortiz, she would like to basically overturn the denial. Is that correct? She would like to approve the license. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct.
So if we vote, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And, and I, and if you feel comfortable, Karen, I read through all that, and you're right, it doesn't, it doesn't add up, but I also talked to the chief. The chief's on with us. And so that's why I wanted to go ahead and just move it and get it on board.
Well, at this, at this point in time, just a point of order, we need to either drop the motion because it dies for a lack of second, or we need to second her motion so that we can have discussion and vote it up or down.
And I'm sorry, Mayor, I was wanting to second it. I, I am in a, I will tell you that I am in agreement with, with the Councilwoman that this has troubled me for quite some time, that these are generally entry-level jobs, and these are people that really need these jobs. A person who served 10 years, I mean, you know, faithfully, I don't have a problem with approving this license. So I, I also will second it, but I will be voting negative on the, or voting no on this.
Okay. Now that we have a second, we could have discussion. So, Councilwoman Hiller, and then Councilman Dobler.
Thank you. I, I am, my concern, and apologies if it wasn't timely, but the cover sheet says that there was an incident in 2017 that is not resolved, and it had to do with the discharge of a firearm. Yet neither Mr. Ortega's letter nor the police department's letter make any reference to that. And that was my confusion. There's one, they only talk about these very old claims, yet if this other is a fact, I hate to move forward without that clarified, and certainly without him here as well to be able to explain it. I, if, if the facts were clear, I might still be concerned, but the facts are not clear. Thank you.
Councilman Dobler?
Yeah, two thoughts. I agree with Councilwoman Hiller. I guess I'd like to know what the, what the basis for the denial was, whether it was the 2010 incident or the 2017 incident. And then I guess just if we vote down the appeal, what does that leave us with? I mean, to me, wouldn't it make more sense to vote to rescind the denial? Yeah. Lisa, you want to clarify that for us, please?
Yes, Councilmember Dobler, I think that'd be correct. It's almost like you're stating a negative because if you want to do the opposite of what's being recommended by the legal advisor, it's, it would be, the motion would be denial of the denial, and that sounds so odd. But yes, I think that what Councilmember Dobler is saying is what Councilmember Ortiz is wanting to do ultimately.
That's not what she said.
All right, so we need to make sure the motion is phrased correctly.
Yeah, so at this point in time, if we can have a withdrawal of the motion, or Council, Lisa, could this be done by a friendly amendment?
Yeah, the, the motion, as I had it down, and Brenda can confirm one way or the other, was approval of the denial. That means that everyone would have to vote in the negative to allow this individual to proceed.
Correct. And that's how she wanted it.
Yeah, correct. That's
That's exactly how she wanted it.
Right.
Okay, Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have all the paperwork right here in front of me, but I read it over, and I thought that he did have an explanation that the discharge of the weapon was accidental when he was cleaning it or something of that nature. So I read through everything, and I just want to say, you know, I, I agree. I mean, second chances are everything, and this is his, he's been pretty seamless on this. And I don't know if you overlooked it, Councilwoman Hiller, but I remember seeing that. It was an accidental discharge of the firearm that he made, that he made reference to. Thank you, Mayor.
City manager, would it be helpful if the chief could provide some remarks?
Yeah. Chief Cochran?
Yeah, the denial was based upon the triple I check, which reflects the previous conviction on his record, which is what, 10 years old. The 2017 case has not been dispensed of yet, so there's nothing on the triple I check at this point.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Well, this is just clarification. The the cover sheet is where it discloses the 2017 firearm and talks about the, the status of that case. It is not mentioned in Mr. Ortega's letter. It does say that he, he failed, he I'm reading it here. It, it says that in part it's being denied because he failed to disclose that 2017 claim. They just don't match up. Because his, his letter doesn't mention that claim at all, to the best I can tell, nor does the, nor does the letter from the police department. It's only the cover letter that, the cover memo that we get, the council order form that mentions it. So
You are correct, Councilwoman, but when we do a denial, what we have to go on is what we can prove, and what we can prove is a triple I. And if the other case has not been dispensed of yet, and in essence, doesn't even show up on the triple I, it's not there. So that's why that discrepancy would appear.
So if I can clarify, then it's as if it doesn't exist, and he did not have a responsibility to disclose it on the application?
No, not saying that. He has, he has a responsibility to disclose everything. That's why it's an affidavit, and that's why he's swearing to it. So he has that responsibility to disclose it. But the denial is based upon what I can prove, and what we can prove is a triple I, and that's our measuring stick or our standard for which we approve or deny those licenses.
I'm reading it, and it says, "Mr. Ortega pled no contest in municipal court to unlawful discharge of a firearm on September 26, 2017." The police department denied his application based on the fact that he did that. That's what our cover sheet said.
Yeah.
So, it was just and then it's the, it's the letter that says that he failed to disclose the old one. And that he has tickets that he has to pay, which are not mentioned in the cover sheet.
Yeah, the tickets are still, those are out on warrant, which have to be addressed. Mr. Ortega was given all the information that he needs to make everything correct, and he has not followed through with that information, or has not followed through with what he has been told he needs to do, rectify everything 100%. And so he's, that's why he's appealing the denial. The simple fact is that if he can get you guys to override it, he gets his license, he goes on to work, and doesn't have to take care of the issues that he has been told he needs to address.
So my concern that, that, and just, I don't mean to stop the conversation, but the concern that I have is that at this point in time, we're having the discussion that we're supposed to have with Mr. Ortega present. And, and the, the train of thought of the kindness of Councilwoman Ortiz, after this discussion, it concerns me that there would be a determination made by a vote that would not allow for him to provide his feedback. Just because of that, my request would be to the two individuals that made the motion, a consideration for a withdrawal, and, and then the potential of a new motion being presented so that Mr. Ortega could be present with us to clarify any questions. Councilman Duncan?
I guess here is my issue and my concern. We have the denial letter in front of us, and that is the official reason for the denial for for issuing this license. And from my perspective, that is what he is appealing and what we should be going off of. Can somebody on staff please explain why they decided to include in the cover letter the additional information, which does not seem as if it was an actual reason for the denial at this time? Because I believe that is causing great unnecessary confusion.
Not sure who wrote the cover letter, so I'm not sure who to address that to.
Brett, I believe Mark did, but I don't know if he's on.
I don't think he is. I don't see him on.
From my perspective, I'm using the denial letter, period, not the cover letter because that wasn't relevant to the, to this point as to the rationale for his denial as far as we're being presented. So that would be my.
Yeah, and, and part of the confusion here was the denial, the denial was issued originally under Luther Gagne, who was a previous legal advisor who is now, no longer with us. And this is one of the first ones I know that our current legal advisor has dealt with. So that may lead to some of the confusion. The denial letter was based upon the triple I. Yeah.
Which again brings us to, there's confusion. I think that the best thing would be to rescind these motions so that we can proceed with moving this for when we all have the information and the people that we need. Councilman Padilla.
I would agree with you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. My, my question I haven't heard yet is, is there some immediacy to this? I mean, you know, the idea I think you first brought up was that we would move this out a little bit so that we could have Mr. Ortega present or in this case also have additional information. Is there some immediacy that it has to be done tonight? Because otherwise I would tend to agree with you that I think you can move it in and out to allow both things to occur, to have him present and to have some clarification on this issue. I would feel more comfortable in doing that than, than moving forward right now.
Councilwoman Ortiz and Deputy Mayor Emerson, would you be amicable to withdrawing your motions?
You know, Mayor, I'm, I'm. Mayor, I'm, I'm going to go ahead and withdraw and hopefully we can, we can get this clarified. And so that, that way that man can work. It's only $124. I know he has a worn out and he can get it, get it taken care of. I don't know if that could be part of the process, that he has to do that before he can get it so that he can move on with, with time so hard. I don't think he's a threat to us. I, I just think we need to make him do what he needs to do. We, we've seen, I've seen a lot of these and, and I'm, I'm not real concerned. I'm, I'm just wanting to get, get him back, back to work and so he can be able to take care of his family. It's, it's tough out there right now. So I'll be, I'll be willing to do that. I just, I just wanted to move it along so, so he, he does, he's, he's got to wait several weeks now. And, you know, sometimes that can be a hardship and that's all I wanted is, is to move it along. But if Papa Padilla says move it along, that's what we'll do. That's what we'll do.
Deputy Mayor, do you do the same? You withdraw your motion? Okay, we're back open to conversation. Councilman Duncan.
I just have a request then of staff between now and then. If we could get a very specific clarification on the exact reasons for denial, that we can stick to that. I, I don't think it's fair to bring in other issues if they are still being litigated or resolved that he is still working on, if they weren't the basis for the actual denial. I'm not sure that's fair to him or the process. So that would be my request. Thank you.
We'll take care of it.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to defer this to December 1st where Mr. Ortega can appear? Councilwoman Valdivia makes a motion. Councilwoman Neger seconds. At all this point, I ask if anybody has some additional comment that they would like to provide on this new motion to defer to December 1st? Seeing none, we proceed to the vote. This vote is to defer.
Mayor De La Asla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
Valdivia Akala.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Padilla.
Yes.
Neger.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
And Duncan.
Yes.
We have nine yes, motion carries.
We now have public comment. Public comment has been submitted via email. We did receive one letter and just wanted to make sure that we were noting that public comment, because of the challenges that we're having until we're able to resolve them, will be submitted to the council members. The council members are on receipt of the documentation. We now move on to the announcements. If the clerk would read.
And no agenda for next week.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I have, governing body was sent a note, an email today, referenced the decision we made today to close court dockets for them between now and December 4th at least. Through the analysis that the judge made, it was best that we stop the court dockets. The court offices will be open and you will be able to take care of any business that you need to with the court at that time. But we will suspend court dockets until a date. We don't know for sure yet. We'll be analyzing what kind of metrics we want to have before we start opening again. But at least through December 4th at this point. And that's the last public comment I have.
Thank you, City Manager. So a few things that I wanted to discuss tonight. First of all, I wanted to say, we received the call earlier. Everybody was made aware and that is the subject of one of the documents that we received for public comment, that the tower, the Menninger Tower is now, the, the hospital has decided that they are unable to take care of it. I wanted to make sure that we made public that this was a conversation that was at some point in time brought to the council body. There's been a lot of partners in our community trying, trying to figure out what a good solution is for this tower. We have been working with different individuals, different organizations, trying to figure out who is interested. I can tell you that there are some passionate advocates for that tower to still remain in our community. I'm sure in that you're going to hear some comments tonight from some of the council members. We love that tower. We believe that it's part of our skyline and we do hope that, that now that we are, that, that, that we can figure out a resolution to this issue. I think that most importantly, the one thing that I did want to make sure that we addressed this evening is where we're at as a community. And if I were to be able to give you all a state of the incident of COVID-19, I would tell you that we are in the position that we did not want to see ourselves in. Just this week, we recently found out that our hospitals, that just last week on Thursday, were at an 80% capacity are full as of yesterday, which means that our community, should we have somebody that gets chronically sick, we may have some trouble in our community getting people access to healthcare. And, and I want you all to stop for a second and consider how critical this is. Now, as a community, the longest time, the county has been doing an admirable job, working alongside Dr. Patzino and the Incident Command Team to try to work with our community, to listen to the concerns of our community. Because we are very cognizant of the fact that this virus is not just a health issue, it is also an economic issue. But in order for our economy to move, we need to have people that are alive. And we need to make sure that we safeguard each other. We have worked and asked individuals to please wear a mask. We have doctors that are working round the clock. Just today, we found out that we have four more deaths. Our numbers are reaching 100. And for us as a community to consider that we have 126, 127,000 people and in the span of the last nine months, because of this virus, we've lost 100 people, should be giving us enough reason to pause. Now, the COVID virus doesn't have a party. It is neither a Democratic virus or a Republican virus, the last I checked. It's a medical issue. And we've tried working with our community to ensure that people have access to their liberties. But at a certain point, we have to understand that our liberties come with responsibility. We're approaching the, the season of Thanksgiving and the season of Christmas. And I can tell you that this is the time in which typically, typically as a people, regardless of which faith we follow, we want to gather and be with the people that we love. And typically, at some point in time in this season, people exchange gifts, right? And everybody is excited about sharing a gift. We have the opportunity of giving the gift of kindness and life to our neighbors and to our economy. Should we choose to take care of each other? I understand that our small businesses need to continue operating. They are the lifeblood of our community. And I want to make it very clear, we want to support our small businesses and we want to support our large businesses as well. But we also need to measure the fact that we have a hospital that is asking for help. Disregard us, as policymakers, we're not as important. We're concerned about you and your family being able to have access to critical care should they need it. So I implore all of you. We are in a critical condition. Your hospitals, not one, your hospitals, your medical practitioners, your elderly, need you to consider staying home. Need you to consider maybe celebrating Thanksgiving virtually. Need you to consider the gift of allowing us to celebrate with our family members next year in Christmas. Right now, we have two council members. And I'll never forget that when this all started, I looked around the table of the council and I said, my prayer is that nobody on this council ever has to struggle with this. We have two. Two so far. Two too many. That God knows they were doing the right thing, but there's so much virus in our community that they got it. If we have people that are doing the right thing and when they're out, they're getting sick, it's telling you that the transmission level is significant. 15% of the individuals that end up in a hospital require intensive care. And a bigger number of those will never return to their homes. Thank you to the businesses that are already moving towards curbside service. I called my vet today and they're like, hey, if you're going to come and drop off one of the pets, you need to do curbside. And I've heard of two or three businesses that are transitioning into that. I know that as a council body, we are ready to stand with and for our community if and when the time arises. And I want to thank these council members that are courageous and that are concerned about making sure that our community preserves as many residents as we can. Thank you all for your leadership. And I look forward to leadership of our citizens, especially those of you who have been doing everything, everything right. Thank you. Don't give up. The end is near. We have two vaccines. We have more therapies coming. The end is near. This is a marathon. We're almost there. Just keep trucking. And to those of you who have not been concerned because you didn't feel like it was going to get bad in our community, it's here. I implore you to ask the questions of the people that could help you understand how you can help us preserve our health and our economy. We need each of you. Thank you so much. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm going to keep it really short. In Ecclesiastes 3, it says, there's a time for everything and a season for every activity under the heavens. It's time to mask up. We are going through our season of this pandemic and it's time for everybody to mask up. And if you don't want to do it for yourself, do it for somebody else. You know, we need to, to teach people, you know, I went in the store the other day and I, and I was just appalled. Wear your mask over your nose and your mouth. It does, your mask does you no good under your chin, on your ear. It's like, come on, we can do this, Topeka. We can do this, Shawnee County. Let's mask up. We're better than that. I've received calls from relatives that are out of town and we're in the top 10. They're like, what are you guys doing? Because we had it right. We had it right. So I'm just begging everybody, you know, I, I listened to Dr. Pizino's Facebook and he was just pleading, that mean man was pleading his guts out to everybody, that he wants everybody well. And it says, heart wrenching that he has the knowledge that he has and nobody's listening. We can do a better job. Let's just not be so selfish. This virus, it's real. It's, it's, it's real. If you know somebody that needs masks, let's get them to them. Let's talk to our children. Quarantine has been hard, but it has to be done. And I just want to say thank you to everyone that is trying to encourage everyone. And I wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. It is what you make it. And if it's just me and my turkey, we gonna be all right. As long as I got some Miracle Whip and some bread, we're gonna be all right. So God bless everybody and I hope our numbers get better. We can work on this. We can do this. We can think outside the box and that's what Topeka is good for. We're the heartland. It starts within our heart. Let's do this. Thank you, Mayor.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'm sorry, I've been traveling for work today. I was originally was not going to be at the meetings today, but since it all went virtual, I was able to do it. So I apologize for the video and all the, all the problems I've been experiencing. All that said, I am socially distanced. I'm outside away from everybody, so I don't have my mask on right now. But yeah, I'll just echo what you and Councilwoman Ortiz said. You know, last night, a couple school boards, yesterday, Auburn, Washburn and Shawnee Heights, they're, they're going full virtual, I think, starting next week. And I, I have two kids that, that, that kind of, you know, it, it kind of crushed them a little bit. But as you said, Mayor, there's a vaccine. I mean, my gosh, we're almost through this long, dark night. So everybody hang in there, try to have a great, well, have a great Thanksgiving in spite of this. We will get through this together, guys. Thank you.
Councilman Padilla.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I appreciate your words and everything that Councilwoman Ortiz said really strikes home. And I think that everyone of us sitting here, we set the example immediately for our own families and the social circles that we have. And we try to do that and I know I've tried to do that. I've heard some disappointments from some of my family members that, well, we won't be able to have the big get together. We won't have Tamale Day this year, you know, those kinds of things. But you, you know, you really stop and think about it. The day is just a day set on the calendar. And, and we can celebrate with our families any day of the year. And so putting it off and waiting till it's safe for everyone is the right thing to do for everyone. So I encourage everyone who is listening, talk to your families. You know, it's, it's not going to be that tough. It's just different. And we can adapt. Bigger has always adapted. And I encourage everyone to do so. I want to move on, but I want to give a shout out, if I may, Mayor. In last Friday's newspaper, there was an article about Washburn University's first Latina sorority. And I, I'm so proud that they have organized on the campus. And so I just want to give a shout out to Gamma Phi Omega. And I appreciate that they've gotten together. Washburn has been a big supporter of Mana and its leadership training for young Latinas in the Ermanitas Program. They've also hosted the Hispanic Leadership Group. So this is yet another way of showing us that we, as Latinx, they call us now, I guess, are very active in this community. And I'm glad to see that the young leaders are organizing and have chosen Washburn to establish this sorority. So thank you, everyone. Please have a very. to establish this sorority. So thank you, everyone. Please have a very enjoyable Thanksgiving.
Councilwoman Nager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to echo what you have already mentioned about how we need to come together and help our healthcare providers. They are doing the very best they can, giving the best care that they can and trying to keep healthy themselves. As a resource for this Thanksgiving, if you do not have a paid subscription to the service Zoom, which is actually the software that we're using right now, Zoom has announced that going from midnight Eastern Time on Thursday, November 26th through 6:00 AM Eastern Time on Friday, November 27th, they are lifting any sort of time limit on this service. Usually you only get 40 minutes for free during that, I'm doing the math in my head, that 30-hour time period, which will actually be 11:00 PM on Wednesday through 5:00 AM on Friday for us, you can use this program with your family. Leave in with your friends, with your chosen family. Please do take advantage of that. I also want to express that I very much, although he can be very cantankerous, I miss Councilman Lesser on tonight's call and wish him a speedy recovery. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Dobler.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things here. Appreciate the background on the Menninger Tower from some guy named Duncan. I don't know if he's any relation to our esteemed colleague, but that's a great piece of history in Topeka and I hope, I hope we can find a way to preserve that. I was, however, involved in, in another historic building in Topeka. Many years ago, the old First National Bank at Six and Kansas, through some sort of maneuvering, the city of Topeka ended up owning that 13-story building with very little potential of, of reuse. And the city spent, I think it was close to 10 years trying to figure out what to do with that building. Ultimately had to bear the expense, that's taxpayer expense, to demolish that building. So we just need to be very careful what we agree to do with historic buildings. It should be hopefully a partnership with many folks, but not ultimately the city of Topeka having to make decisions on, on a building like that. I think there will be a coalition that will come together and be able to preserve that piece of history and I pray that happens. I would like to say thanks to utilities. A couple of weeks ago, I have a neighborhood over near 37th Street that experiences water breaks almost on a daily basis. And I had had a number of folks contact me. I asked utilities to put together a little presentation and meet with the neighborhood. We were able to do that in a large room with masks and social distancing. And the utilities gave a great presentation on what it, you know, what the problems are with our distribution system, how much money it's going to take to replace the, the lines that need to be replaced. And I think the, the neighborhood was appreciative of getting that information and also found out that it's not, not tomorrow and not next year, but a couple of years away, their, their neighborhood will see water line replacements and that, you know, thanks to this council for approving rate, rate increases that allows more money to be put into those, those facilities. And finally, yeah, thoughts and prayers to Councilman Lesser. I know he will pretend like it's nothing, but it can't be fun right now. So let's, let's hope, let's hope he has a speedy recovery. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Duncan.
Mayor, couple things. First, I just want to thank city staff in general over the last week, week and a half, there's been a host of random issues ranging from paving of roads in front of businesses to an issue with Councilmember Dobler and I on our borders, my district and his with Sound. And I had some crosswalk issues in my district and all those little things that, at the end of the day, seem sort of small in the grand scheme of things, but actually aren't for the people who live in those areas. And so every time I called or harassed staff, they, they were able to help and have jumped on some of those issues. And so I just want to thank them for all those, that work, not just this week, ongoing, but especially the last couple of weeks. I think it was, I don't know, a couple of months when I got on the council early this year that the Menninger Tower was first brought to us as a body for a brief discussion. And I said at that time, it was one of the very vocal minorities, said, just take it, just take it and we'll figure it out later. That's not how I traditionally like to do these things, but I still sort of, on some level, live by that decree with that property. And I know it's not as simple as that and I'm glad that now some community members are starting to get involved and I've told them I'll help where I can and I'm trying to come up with some ideas so that we don't run into some of the issues that Councilmember Dobler talked about moving forward. But there's only so many buildings, I think, in this community that do have some of that true historic value and I think it falls into that category. So I hope that we can come up with something as a, as a collective to get it figured out. I'll echo what everyone has said with COVID with this. I mean, only you can prevent the spread of COVID. I've had, I've had lots of productive conversations over the last week with folks who don't, we, I don't, we don't see eye to eye on some of our thoughts on COVID, but we've had really good conversations. And what I come down to every time is, we as government bodies, believe it or not, have no desire to put in restrictions that people deem curbing freedoms or restricting access to things and certainly nothing that hurts small businesses. But what I get told all the time is, leave it up to us to make those choices and we'll make the right choices. And then I go and see that people are not always making the right choices. We know besides masks, masks, as I said a week ago, are, are the big hot topic. But we know that gatherings are a big one. And we still have people getting together just as we did at Halloween. As I saw it in my neighborhood, people unmasked and not distancing, gathering together to celebrate the holiday, which amazingly, here we are two weeks from that and we're seeing that spread. And I know our concern as we try to protect our citizens is we're going into another holiday and two weeks from there, we worry about what that's going to mean if people get. So help us help you. We don't want to do anything that over, that is seen as being quote unquote, overstepping, but we've got to have help from everybody out there to do that. And we all know what those things are. So I think if we can buckle down the next six weeks as a society and as a community, we can probably move, move a lot farther than where we are now in a positive way. As to that, as I said last week, my family will be doing Zoom Thanksgiving. We've already set it up and we'll all say hello and eat some food in front of each other on a computer screen and, and we'll all celebrate that way. Even my 88-year-old and 91-year-old grandparents have figured out Zoom. So it can be done. It is easy. And if anyone needs help, just call. I'll tell you how to set it up. So that, thank you, everybody. Have a great Thanksgiving.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of quick things. I too wanted to send a shout out to Mike Lesser. Take care of yourself, Mike. We're all thinking about you. Shout out to city staff. It's the end of the construction year and Councilman Duncan touched on a couple of things, but we're wrapping up street projects, wrapping up sidewalk projects. Some things will be able to extend into the winter. I went and drove Lindenwood the other day. Goes from 6th to 10th in my district. It sounds like, who would think about it? But I think Lindenwood probably had the worst sidewalks in the entire city. And it is wonderful to see, to see those coming together and becoming safe. And, and, and that's happening all over our city in different pockets and with different projects. And so shout out to everybody who's done that work and organized it and it continues to finish it up. That also, I'm proud that we've kept those projects going because those are jobs, they're outside, they're relatively safe and, and we, we've been able to continue to contribute to keeping our economy going in that way too as a city. I won't be able to say all the details, maybe, and on December 1st, someone else can pick this up, but we all got to notice that the utility department has upgraded all the electronic billing and information and it's ready to go. So kudos to them. I know that's been a really long haul to get it together. And, and last but not least, back to COVID. I too am concerned and we, we've talked obviously amongst each other and with others about what we can do to encourage citizens. I echo what my colleagues have said and I have, I have a couple of suggestions that might make it more fun. And that is that we all like goals. Council's going to meet again in two weeks. We have a holiday in between, one that's really going to challenge all of us to manage safely. But if we could all set the goal that in two weeks, we see that the numbers have at least plateaued, if not gone down, if everybody does what they can in two weeks, the numbers should look better than they are today. We can look at that as a council and celebrate if everyone in Topeka has been able to hang on. And the other thing is that we, some of my colleagues have talked about being creative and taking on a challenge, which is how we're wired here. I would suggest that challenge everyone to figure out something that's creative and really satisfying for yourselves and your family for this holiday. And go ahead and email us at council@topeka.org and tell us what you did. And I personally would take the time to pull out some of those and share them in two weeks after a successful holiday. Thanks and have a great time, everyone.
Councilwoman Valiebe Alcala.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to say for the folks that have been calling and emailing city council, myself and city manager about the incredibly tragic death of a young teenage girl on Northwest Lyman Road. Please keep them coming. We know that this section of North Topeka has had a series of tragedies down this particular street. And please understand that your voices are being heard. Every email and phone call is being acknowledged and it's appreciated. Understand that I have been working with Public Works. We had one of our initial meetings on October 23rd about what we can do, hopefully on a quicker basis, if we can move that through, if, if the dollars can be found, to get the much-needed sidewalks that are there. If you email me, I will send you information on, you know, what we've been talking about at meetings. And deep condolences to the family that lost this young teenage girl at such a young age during this time of the holiday year. I would also say that expressing, you know, support with what the mayor is talking about. And there is so many times when we have differing opinions on council, but one thing is absolutely evident and that is, is that we feel a sense of responsibility for our districts across Topeka as well. I tell my grandkids, use your Jesus heart. I know that's corny. Use your Jesus heart. When you think about this holiday time, use your Jesus heart. And that's what I would ask. I would ask that you mask up, that you would think not only of yourself, but you would think of others and be a good ancestor, because that's what we need right now. We need people to be good ancestors so that everybody can have that future that they're looking forward to. For those that are going to be alone during the holidays, just blessings to you. Reach out by phone or any way that you can and understand that we're never truly alone. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you all. Mike, we love you. Happy Thanksgiving to all of you. And I do look forward to seeing every one of you in a few weeks. Have a great evening. This meeting is adjourned.